All right, board, we are now live and ready to go.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Aguilera. We are returning to work session as of eleven o'clock this day, Tuesday, July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five. We now have four members of the Board of Commission. This is Chair Catherine Harrington. I'm joined by Vice Chair Pam Trees, Commissioners Jerry Willie and Commissioner Nafisa Fai. Commissioner Jason Snyder is excused. We will pick back up on our published agenda with topic three, Salmon Berry Trail Proposed Governance Structure and Next Steps. Please take your way.
Good, good morning. Gosh, yeah, still morning. Chair Harrington and Commissioners, I'm Stephen Roberts. I'm the Land Use and Transportation Director, and I'm joined by Diame Valentine. Diame is our Transportation Planning Section Manager and has been our Salmon Berry Trail go-to person probably from the beginning. So, yeah, he has a lot of history with this project. So he's going to do most of the talking today, but I wanted to just maybe give a quick overview of what we're here to do today. We're the first part of a two-part series of briefings on this similar topic. We're here to really talk about the boring government stuff, sort of, sort of the administrative things that go into this.
It's not boring.
Exciting. Yes, thank you. That's right.
Beauty is in the eye of the boulder.
Exactly. Yeah, bureaucracy can be entertaining in its own way. So we're going to talk a little about the, about that side of things, and then you'll be hearing from Caroline Fitchett and some folks from the Salmon Berry Trail Foundation that will be talking about the more fun parts of this project, getting it going, hopefully. So what we plan to walk through with you, really, it's focused on governance. How are we, as agencies, the county in particular, playing a role in trying to help with the facilitation of development of this pretty important trail connection here? So there are specifically some changes that are being proposed in the existing Salmon Berry Trail Intergovernmental Agency, or STEA. And so I want to just sort of highlight the distinctions between STEA and then STF, the Salmon Berry Trail Foundation, which is a nonprofit, non-agency entity, if you will. And then we'll just talk a little bit about some potential next steps that we're going to be asking your board to consider coming up. And then Diame and I are happy to answer any questions that you have at the end of the briefing. Go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Commissioners. As introduced, Diame Valentine, Transportation Planning Section Manager, and will walk us through our presentation this morning. So here, we have a couple of policy questions. We'll revisit at the end of the presentation. Primarily, we're interested in getting your feedback on the kind of proposed governance structure that we will talk through, as well as provide you with the next steps in terms of the Memorandums of Understanding that are in draft form for your consideration, which we will bring forward later this year, later this summer, actually.
Do our current ones just automatically expire, or?
Good question. Yes, the, the current IGA, which I will discuss in a little bit more detail, does, is set to expire at the end of September.
Thank you.
So just kind of a brief overview, I know Carolyn and team will do a deeper dive in terms of the project to date, but I think worth noting, this effort has been underway for many years, really initiated by the Port of Tillamook Bay, which owns the rail corridor. And the corridor itself extends from the city of Banks to Tillamook. It's a total of about eighty-four miles. Within Washington County, there's about twenty-seven miles of rail corridor. And some of the legalistic elements that have applied to the planning efforts and, and project implementation really was initiated through the passage of Senate Bill fifteen sixteen, which directed the Oregon Department of Forestry and the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department to collaborate and work with partners to really help in, in the planning effort to, to envision this multi-generational trail. And I say multi-generation because it will take many, many years to realize this. And Washington County has been involved since really early in the process, two thousand and fifteen. We, as part of the last round of the major transportation system plan update, incorporated the trail, the corridor, as a planned regional facility in the TSP. And the Salmon Berry Trail Concept Plan, which our TSP is consistent with the alignment, was adopted in two thousand and fifteen. STEA, as we commonly refer to, the Salmon Berry Trail Intergovernmental Agency, was created through an intergovernmental agreement, which is under a provision of ORS one ninety, so it's like a special service district, which included Oregon Parks and Recreation District, Oregon Department of Forestry, the Port of Tillamook Bay, and Tillamook County. And then Washington County became a voting member to that entity in two thousand and eighteen. And that agency, the STEA, has made a lot of progress. Some important early wins were officially rail banking the corridor in two thousand and eighteen, as well as signing a lease with the port for the rail corridor to support trail development. So Washington County's role in STEA over that time has, as I noted, they are now a voting member. We are now a voting member. Staff's role has really been in support of representative, which Commissioner Willie serves as your representative to STEA. We also have worked extensively with supporting agency collaboration and coordination on the effort as well. And this has been reflected in the, the planning work program for a number of years.
Do we also provide funding to this STEA?
That is one, yes. We have also provided funding.
So you don't get a vote unless you provide funding, right?
That is, that is somewhat accurate. We have provided administrative support, contributions.
I'm just trying to make sure I know what is accurate. So if I'm wrong, clear that statement and give us the straight information.
So there's, I think we have contributed three thousand dollars for administrative support for STEA in, and I, I don't have it right in front of me, but a number of years since two thousand and nineteen. We have also supplied, provided funding support for the Salmon Berry Trail Foundation.
That's the clarity. Got it. Yep.
Which has been to support their work in kind of supporting STEA. There's a kind of an administrative relationship there, as well as project development.
Yep. Thank you for reminding me. And the three thousand is annually?
I would have to go back. I know in two thousand and nineteen, when we became voting members, I think there was a, a small contribution to support administration. The administrative role for STEA had been supported through Oregon Solutions. So that's Governor's Office had been supporting them through a couple of years. They also had, hello, Mike. Mike Cafarada. Okay, he can help jump in. He's.
We're just trying to get clarity on if Washington County provides funding, particularly this current fiscal year. We're not looking for a long history.
Yeah. And so to answer that question, there is, the, your board has included a twenty thousand dollar contribution to support the forthcoming Oregon Park and Recreation District staff support for this transition to, which I will get to in a little bit later here, but there is a twenty thousand dollar contribution there.
Have the other partners.
Yeah, and we have a.
As a, as a follow-up to the question, we will provide a overview of what, what we have and what we are this, this current fiscal year, and provide that also because what we're getting into is where this gets complicated with STEA and also Salmon Berry Foundation. So in that follow-up, we'll be clear on where those dollars have gone and how this comes together.
Thank you. We're getting a little ahead of ourselves.
Yeah, no worries.
Okay.
Okay. So the current governance structure of STEA, which we've kind of discussed a little bit, which has been really the coordinating body since two thousand and sixteen, since its inception, has really supported the planning and, and interagency collaboration. As I noted, they were the entity that enabled the rail banking, as well as they're the holders of the lease with the, the port. I think what's important is that the agency is really a partnership, although it has the statutory framework that would support an entity. It hasn't really, there hasn't been any action to support capacity with that organization. So it has really been put upon the, the members to support that. I didn't note Oregon Solutions had supported that in some capacity for a period of time. But, so there is no staff. It is, and there is no capacity to really support the administrative role that, that, that are important in relation specifically with like the corridor lease. And that current agreement does expire in September. And we do, so as, as I noted a little bit earlier, the Salmon Berry Trail Foundation has, in two thousand and twenty, I think is the date, the foundation was formed, and as part of their formation, there was, with strong support of STEA members, the foundation was, we entered into, or we, I say, we, STEA, and the foundation entered into a memorandum of understanding, kind of defining some roles and responsibilities. Included in kind of some of their roles were fundraising, advocacy, so supporting kind of fiscal agent responsibility to be able to receive funds on behalf of STEA, as well as supporting trail development and volunteer coordination. They were not, as defined, a, a voting member on STEA. And just worth noting, Commissioner Willie does serve on the Salmon Berry Trail Foundation Board of Directors as well.
Can I ask you a question on that, then? Does that mean the member composition on the Cemetery Salmon Berry Trail Foundation member, members on that?
Can we wait until the next slide? Because it gets to membership.
Yeah, I was just wondering, just so I don't forget this question.
Okay.
I was, I'm wondering if there's a same, the number of people that serve on that STEA is the same number of people that serve on the Salmon Berry Foundation. You can answer that later.
Not, yeah.
You can follow along.
On, on the right here, we do identify the, the voting members of STEA, which includes OPRD, the Oregon Department of Forestry, Port of Tillamook Bay, and then the two counties, Washington and Tillamook County. We also have, STEA also has ex officio members that participate, which included the Grand Ron of, the Confederate Tribe with the Grand Ron, as well as others, including some legislators. And Betsy Johnson was an early kind of strong advocate for, for STEA and the trail. And I'll, I'll let Carolyn speak to kind of the composition of their board. So the proposed new governance structure, and really the, the reason behind and what initiated the conversation was the set expiration of STEA agreement. So conversations started in earnest, really about a year ago. And over that period of time, Mike Cafarada has really supported, has, was actually brought on from ODF into OPRD to support this kind of transition period. So, which is why Mike kindly appeared to join, answering the questions. So the new governance structure shifts the STEA organization and transitions it into more of an advisory body within the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department's purview. So OPRD would effectively assume the responsibility of STEA, the administrative responsibility of administering the lease, as well as the rail banking agreement. They would serve in the capacity of convening the, what is now being termed the new sponsor committee, which is STEA, effectively the STEA members, with some adjustments that I'll note. I've heard it also referred to as the Salmon Berry Trail Council. These are all to be determined. These are just kind of draft at this point. So, and then that, oh, the Parks and Recreation Department would be responsible for also signing trail segment operating agreements. So they would, those who are developing and planning on operating, maintaining the trail, OPRD would now be the oversight and body acknowledging and, and approving those plans with kind of the thumbs up from the advisory committee. And so the, the membership of that new council would include existing STEA members with some revisions. So the port would now transition to an ex officio member, and then the Salmon Berry Trail Foundation would become a member of that council. In addition to continuing to kind of support their, their charge of being the fiscal and fundraising agents, as well as advocacy, and, and really working with trail champions to, to create, to engage them in supporting the trail work, trail development. So it, Washington County's proposed role, so the, the memorandum of understanding that we'll bring forward to you later this summer, which outlines these responsibilities, have specific partner expectations, so voting members of that council, which, so we would become a participating voting member. We also effectively, oh, I do want to note that there is, back to the previous slide, bring to my notes, there is some expect, there is a kind of an expectation that OPRD had in this new arrangement, that it was somewhat predicated on being able to support a position, because they needed resources and capacity to provide that kind of administrative role. It's predicated on members or funding, funding contribution to maintain that, that capacity.
And I have no idea how much that would involve cost-wise.
So we have, they have estimated about eighty-five thousand per year, and that is.
Just to us, or?
That's in total. Yeah. And I think what's important to note is, that's just an estimate, and, and that could vary. And so I think it would be revisited on an annual basis to determine what that actual need is.
But who are the parties that would actually need to contribute towards that?
Next slide. Yeah, and I think this is, this is the initial funding commitment and, and list of contributing partners. I think what will be an early task and charge for the new council would be establishing some kind of a funding strategy to address this for ongoing contributions potentially.
I'd like to hear things like, here is the top-end proposal each year over the next five years, right? Because we try to look out five years. Here is the maximum extent in terms of miles, and right, there's a larger majority in Tillamook County than there is in Washington County. And so I would expect proposals that would account for the fact that the whole trail is only successful if the whole trail gets built, right? And it happens over time. So what is the percentage that is in Washington County versus in Tillamook County? And Tillamook County and the Port of Tillamook and the jurisdictions within can figure out how to cover that percentage share. It's those kinds of things I'm looking for clarity on in terms of proposals before we are asked to sign, vote to sign a new MOU.
And I will say that the current MOU is just for this fiscal year. So it, it doesn't commit us to.
So there's a current proposed MOU?
Yeah. And I'll, I'll get to that, but I did want to cover some points on our proposed responsibility. So it, the one aspect, that second line there, which memorializes essentially the, the county's statutorily required land use development review function is important, just for all parties' awareness, and also establishes kind of the conditional expectations around operations and maintenance that would be incorporated into the development review approval to develop the trail effectively.
Why would we want to take on responsibility for long-term operations and maintenance when we already have this trail called the Banks-Fernonia Trail? And it's pretty, I think, in my last write of it, is unsafe, you know, with a way, I mean, you have to be super careful.
So I do want to, yeah, I mean, it's clear to differentiate.
How is it different?
This, this would be so when the, whoever's developing the trail, which is yet to be identified, we have trail partners, and I think Carolyn can speak to that in terms of current project status in Washington County. But whoever ends up actually constructing and operating the trail will be responsible for doing the long-term operations and maintenance. That, that's not a Washington County role. What we're saying here is that we're.
The title says Washington County Proposed Role.
So we would be requiring them to maintain, to
Require it.
Establish plans to operate and maintain, and then we would be essentially regulating and enforcing that. So that, that, the expectation is no different than what we established with the Banks-Fernonia Trail.
Okay.
Which was establishing kind of a, a conditional use permit that allowed them to construct the trail. Within that, we define what those kind of operations, maintenance expectations are through conditions of approval, that if OPRDs started to not maintain or, or be consistent with, then we could effectively seek enforcement action to ask them to do so.
What I'm, what I'm hearing sounds perfectly reasonable and sounds like your thinking is in line with the, the past agreement. So the Washington County's proposed role is the county would review those trail signs and require of others.
Correct.
The, the long term. Okay, now it's clear to me. Thank you. Is, is everybody else clear on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, great. So I'm, I'm the slow one in this today.
No, actually, I benefited at that discussion.
Yeah.
I think Carolyn will, in her presentation, will also give you a little bit more.
So it'll reinforce. That's great. Okay.
And I think it's important to, to reflect that there's differences between Washington County and Tillamook County's in that, in Tillamook County, you have a number of incorporated cities in which the corridor.
Yes.
ISACs. And so they, they are, they are more willing, you know, they're partners.
They're working through their part.
Rockaway Beach is, you know, a strong advocate. They want to see the development. They are kind of agreeing to be operators and maintainers of the facility once constructed. Washington County, we really don't have those partners present to, to assume that role. You know, it's all unincorporated. There is segments that run through the Oregon Department of Forestry, Timberlands, the State Forest, City Bakes has a small little portion, and then it's the Salmon Berry Trail Foundation, who is kind of the strongest proponent of development of the trail.
Can I ask you a question on this slide, then? I, I follow everything on this slide, but I thought I heard you earlier, the previous slide, about the ex officio role. How does that connect?
On STEA.
STEA. So we're on ex officio in one, and we're a voting member.
We were initially as an ex officio on STEA, but we did become a, a full voting member in two thousand and nineteen. So this would maintain that, that voting.
The current structure.
Yep.
Okay.
So then that last point gets to the funding contribution, which would be at your discretion, obviously, on an annual basis.
Could we go back to the funding slide?
Yeah, we'll get to that now. Okay. Okay. So there is an update to that table. So this, the, the table on the right illustrates the current funding commitment, and Mike just mentioned that ODF has committed twenty to twenty-five. I don't, yeah, okay.
Committed what?
Twenty to twenty-five thousand. So that total would be about ninety-seven. So my math is correct.
New government, there will be a new governance structure, MOU, that someday we'll get to see, that outlines the Salmon Berry Trail Council, its role, its oversight, sponsor responsibilities, and all of the parties.
Correct.
To be part of it. And then related to the funding side, there will be another MOU to support additional, or dollars towards the Oregon Park and Recreational Department administrative role. So the budget proposal that we had and that we adopted includes twenty thousand in one-time funds towards that specific objective.
Correct.
Okay. And that is the extent of funding asks for this current fiscal year. Does the MO, would the MOU, when it comes before us, have any state, any expectations for future funding?
It does not.
Okay.
And I, my understanding, Chair, I think the draft MOU will contain language similar to, to the prior slide that said essentially at board discretion, you could contribute additional funds.
Yeah.
But there is not a baked-in expectation of ongoing county funding.
Okay. So I'm just cognizant of the time. We scheduled this for a half hour, so.
So here are the
Policy.
Policy questions for your discussion. So.
What target date do you have for the MOU coming to us? I saw on the previous slide, it was in August or in September, and I just want to make sure that board members have the MOU with enough time to review it. That's all.
Yeah. So we do have drafts that we can distribute, I think, here. Yeah, sure. I mean, I think we're.
All I'm thinking for is that the draft MOU has clearly articulated the Washington County role of this. There may be parts of the MOU that are undergoing change due to other parties. So.
Staff are currently reviewing the MOU, and okay, we'll get that scheduled for a follow-up with your board. Okay, cool.
And our, I think the goal is to have this before you, before the, the expiration. There is a provision in that agreement that would effectively extend STEA through the end of the year, just as a transitionary provision.
Well, um, we have a full board in August, according to the OOO plans that were in the rolling agenda as of July ninth. So I don't see any problem in our looking at that and potential action in August. September tends to vary from week to week. Does the current STEA agreement expire the beginning of September or the very end of September?
I believe it's twenty. I believe it's twenty-first.
Yeah, it's like the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Tillamook County, Washington County, ODF, State Parks, Port, all have to agree on this MOU.
Yeah.
They've all, you're the last one and Tillamook County. And it's, once we get a thumbs up, everybody can sign. So we have to sort of simultaneous and.
Well, with all the information I'm hearing, I, it sounds pretty comfortable for me. And how about for other commissioners? This is one year, correct?
The MOU.
Funding. Yeah, the funding is one year. The, the arrangement for the new governance structure would be it would be revisit. I think there's a provision that it's ten years and then would be revisited.
Okay. So I think just get us the draft as soon as you can and then get it scheduled. And we'll go from there.
I, I do have one last question. I thought Commissioner Willie, I thought you had two amendments, two budget amendments. One was twenty thousand and the other was the fifty thousand. How do we count the fifty thousand? How does this fit into the work?
That gets, that's actually, the fifty thousand was a contribution to the Sambury Trail Foundation.
So we'll get to that.
Carolyn can speak to that.
Next presentation. Okay. So I just want to underscore the twenty thousand as in this presentation is one of two budget amendments that your board approved in the adopted budget process.
Yep.
So this is one. You'll hear the second in the next.
Okay. Why don't we segue then to the next presentation? Thank you for helping us get our heads around that. And I think we've got a decent foundation for moving on to the next part. Foundation's been doing a lot of work.
I'm gonna stay here.
Like you can have.
Good to see you again, Chair Harrington.
So yeah, I'm going to do some introductions here just to to lead this off. Obviously Caroline is our executive director. Mike Cafareta has been on loan from ODF and is now working for another nonprofit organization. But Mike, you've done a great job of putting these connectors together. So thank you very much for your time on that. Caroline has been with us since 2023. She brings a long history of not only fundraising, but lobbying and a variety of other things. And the importance from my standpoint to us being members of STEA and now members of the foundation is that we have twenty-seven miles in Washington County. It's going to be a phenomenal trail as Caroline will identify some of the benefits. You've got information on certainly the health benefits and the economic benefits of this trail. But I'll let her go into that. Interesting thing about Caroline with her background, she's on the board of the Fly Fishing Club of Oregon. She also has history on a, what was it? A cattle ranch in New Mexico. So she comes to us with a lot of broad advice of, of history and certainly experience. And she lives in North Portland with her dogs, Etta James and Tilly. So I thought I'd throw that in there for the personal side of things. So thank you very much, Caroline.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. Thank you.
Make it over.
Okay, great. I want to first acknowledge and really thank the staff of Washington County that are here today and the staff that are not here today because you all do such incredible work for the health and the well-being of the communities of Washington County. And I also want to just recognize a few of my colleagues that are here today, if that's all right. You know, the Samberry Trail Foundation is a small team of two staff, but we have a mighty team of many community members across, across Washington and Tillamook. And we've got Kira Taylor is here in the audience. Kira is a local naturalist. She's an herbalist and an interpretive guide for the Samberry Trail. She also chairs our flora and fauna committee. And we also have Linda Harrington. Linda is a teacher, a longtime teacher in Washington County and a substitute principal in various schools. And then Tim Salich is our board chair for the foundation. He also, he lives in North Plains and serves on the library board in North Plains. And it was retired from the timber industry. Then we have Scott Johnson, who's here. Scott, thank you for coming. Scott lives here locally and he is a trainer for, a senior trainer and trails planner for the U.S. Forest Service who helps us in our trail development. And then of course, we have Mike Cafareta, who just became a board member of the foundation. I do want to start, Commissioner, by to answer your question about the boards and the overlap. And for the foundation board, we personally wanted to have oversight from the STEA board, from a representative of the Tillamook County Commission and the Washington County Commission. Because there's so, so much important work that the commission does and the trail goes, is lengthy through both counties. We also had a, Mike Cafareta was on in an ex officio capacity on the foundation board because he is the person with the most history really with the trail in government, aside from maybe Diame. And, and then we, but he wasn't a voting member. Now he's a voting member. So that gives you an idea. Parks does not have a role on the foundation board. And we have other community members that live in both Washington and Tillamook County that are members of the foundation board.
Caroline, just for the record, you need to introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. For the record, my name is Caroline Fitchett. I'm the executive director of the Samberry Trail Foundation. Thank you very much for having me here today.
Mike?
Good morning, Mike Cafareta. My new role is on the foundation as a board member. My previous role was putting together the new governance structure for State Parks. You know, what's next when the STEA agreement expires. And that ended at the end of June.
Great, great. And so I think, you know, the government work is exciting work, but it's often a lot of details around laws and rules and regulations and surface materials. And of course, when you go to a trail, you think about, okay, am I walking on a trail? Is it dirt? Is it gravel? Is it asphalt? For us at the Sammern Berry Trail, we think about those things, but we also think about and understand what the trail really means to people and communities, which is when you go on a trail and you're in it, it is about the memories that you're creating. And for some people, it's about a place of worship or spirituality that they experience there. It's a connection to the local communities. It's a living classroom for some, like Linda and her students. It is also a living museum for others. So I just want us all to remember that as we're thinking about the trail and the investments that you're making in the development of this trail. I want to talk briefly just about the history. Historically, this rail line was developed in the early nineteen hundreds. It took about three thousand men and a few women to develop the trail over five and a half years. And it connected over twenty communities. When this railroad was built, the only way to get to the Tillamook Coast, if you were not going to use a Native American trail, was through the railway unless you went up to Astoria or down to Yam Hill and then over those mountains. And it connected for timber. It moved timber. It moved people. It was how the tourists, folks in Washington County and Portland got to the Tillamook beaches back in the early days. And it also moved dairy. Now, fast forward in two thousand and seven, oh, this is some examples of what it looked like in timber, some of the very, very large timber that came out of the forest in Washington County and Tillamook. And of course, in two thousand and seven, there was a very big, large storm with gale force winds. This is in, I believe, Washington County in the Salmonberry Canyon area. It is real. It is not fake. Mother Nature is very strong. And when that occurred, it's not going to surprise you ladies, commissioners, that there was, yes, a mom. There was a mom in Tillamook County married to a dairy farmer who had three young boys and she had nowhere safe to take her kids out bicycling. And so she talked to a few other moms and some dads and a few others about her vision when she heard that they were not going to rebuild the railroad, about turning the railroad into a trail. And fast forward, STEA and later the Samberry Trail Foundation campaign. And they had this very large vision for connecting these communities. Of course, it was going to first and foremost help with their kids, but it was also going to be an outdoor classroom. It was going to be a place for small businesses to develop and rise. It was going to be a place to learn about the important history of those communities, the workforce history. And, and they were able to begin to make it happen. We all understand this takes a very, very long, long time.
And can I ask you, can you go back one slide? Because I need you to reset my brain.
Yes.
This board had a walking tour of a section of the Salmonberry Trail. Was that back in summer of twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three? I remember.
I think it was before that.
Was it pre-pandemic?
It was moving.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty-one.
Okay.
Twenty-one, yeah.
Yes, okay. So a lot of time has passed since then, okay? But the vision of having this long extent of trail through that corridor remains. But I think there's an erroneous old fact that's in my brain. And I would like to either eradicate it and I'd like to eradicate it and place the correct twenty twenty-five. So the understanding I had is it's going to be some kind of soft surface trail, not a hard surface trail. There really was stronger interest in people walking and hiking, but not bicycling. And I'm all of those three things. And I think I might have out-to-date thinking. So could you please correct my thinking?
I can deal with that.
About what the twenty twenty-five vision is.
Yeah, Chair Harrington, thank you. So I think I've heard described as a piece of taffy that when you stretch it, it's thicker at the end and thinner in the middle. And the subsequent plan.
I am a New Englander, saltwater taffy.
Yeah, see, you know what happens when you stretch it like that and it's thinner in the middle?
Yeah.
And then subsequent planning really reinforced that and that the long-term view would be on the coastal strip. And here in the, close into Washington County, it would be a paved wide trail that's multi-use. You could have bikers and walkers, you know? But then in the middle, the mother nature makes that very challenging. And so you're probably looking at, at a forty-eight inch wide gravel surface across the trestles and through the tunnels. But with the steepness of the terrain, you really can't put a twelve-foot wide paved surface in there. It's why the railroad failed to begin with. So I think it's a mixture, but here on the edge, you'd have the multi-use and then the middle, you'd have something thinner.
Okay.
Does that help?
Well, yeah, because I was having a hard time with all of the economic estimates about what cyclist spending is going to be when maybe it's not the greatest cycling experience. So.
It will be a beautiful cycling experience, but it won't be road bikes.
Yeah. So it may be gravel bikes and, and the.
But don't show bikes on pavement then.
Well, on the coastal side, they probably will be that.
Yeah. So this, this photo here.
Also important thing about the, the starting point would be, we have some minimum standards. And that at the first step, it might just be forty-inch wide gravel for the whole thing. And then, and then over this little piece might do wider than that. And then others wider than that and connect them. To do it all that wide to start with is going to be financially.
Yeah. And Chair Harrington, I'm just going to follow up on that. So.
So you're showing an end-to-end. That's why I'm hearing all.
Plus, Washington County wants to provide a whole bunch more funding, which would be.
No, it's.
Yeah. Yeah. So we're looking at this.
And advertising is what I'm.
Yeah. As, as an eventual end-to-end with a segment by segment, you know, you can't eat an elephant at one time. It's bite by bite. So we're looking at what can we afford to do segment by segment that communities are also ready for and want. Because the community members around the trail are very important. So I'm just going to fast forward really quick to an example. I don't have a slide for this. But in Washington County, which we will look at in a bit, we're looking at the segment between Manning and Stubbs Stewart State Park. In Tillamook County, we're working on a segment in the city of Wheeler and they have selected to have a gravel path. The city council is, is working on this with STF and the railroad there. And then we're also working in the city of Rockaway. Well, the city of Rockaway wants a concrete, an asphalt path for their community. And so we're working to support them to develop that through the city of Rockaway. So it will look differently depending on the desires of the community, the ability financially of communities to afford and their ability to also maintain those segments of trail. And here, these photos, this shows you Senator Wyden, Senator Merkley's staff with the ties. These are the ties that were removed. And then of course, the bicyclists are in Rockaway. That is a bike brigade to support the Salmonberry Trail at their Fourth of July parade. And then these are members on a guided bike in, in Washington County up above. And then, as you know, that there are four, maybe you don't, but I just wanted to cover, there are four main segments of the trail. There is the valley segment, which is in green, which is really from banks into past timber into the canyon. And then the orange segment is the Salmonberry Canyon. It sort of goes a little bit in and out of Tillamook and Washington County through the canyon area, which is the area that Mike suggested would be gravel or perhaps even a dirt path. And then you've got the river segment, which is in purple, and that is along the Nihalem River. And then green is down the coastline. That is eighty-two miles. The yellow is an extender to extend the trail to the city of Tillamook and perhaps beyond. That is not rail banked. I did want to just briefly show you the timeline from two thousand and seven, when the storm washed out, as Diame talked about. There was legislation. There was funding committed by local partners here in Washington County and by Cycle Oregon to help start the planning. Concept plans were developed. Community meetings were held. Those concept plans now, we've developed, as Mike Cafareta mentioned, some minimum trail standards so that we can look at less expensive opportunities for communities. And of course, the foundation was formed in twenty twenty. Now, this is, is an example of some of our volunteers that were working on the trail. As I mentioned earlier, it's the folks in this room and honestly, hundreds and hundreds of others who have worked on the trail to bring us to where we are today. This is another photo of some of our partners. So the person bending down, that's a student at Pacific University, looking at a culvert that was made out of railroad ties in the nineteen forties. There are hundreds of these culverts that we help manage and identify and clear. Kira does much of this work. And then Kira is also holding a twig with a piece of ice hair on it, which is something that the students also and guests learn about on the trail. And then the group are a number of professors and students from Pacific University, which is one of our partners, helping to develop and engage youth and professors in the trail. On our, sort of our priorities as a foundation is we do on-the-ground stewardship work and trail construction. We do maintenance of the right-of-way. We do a lot of education and outreach, developing partnerships, advocating and raising funding. On the advocating side, I want to say recently, we played a big role in the Oregon Trails Coalition work at the state legislature to both pass the recreational immunity legislation, which helps local governments and helps us at the Samberry Trail. We also advocated very strongly for additional funds for bike and pet active transportation and the transportation bill. Unfortunately, they're going to be working on that more in the future. And we advocated for eight million dollars of funding for our trail projects in Washington County and Tillamook County. We will continue advocating for that in the short session as well. It was our first session in the legislature. We also hold community meetings with community groups. We do speaking engagements and a lot of activity on the right-of-way with community members. I do want to, well, I guess I'm going to, the partners. No, okay. So I'll talk about the partners in, in just a minute. But we have logged over ten thousand volunteer hours with the work of, of our volunteers on the Sammern Berry Trail. The partners, this is a map of the learning mile and the catalyst loop. And our volunteers really came up with the term, the learning mile. This loop goes from Manning through Buxton and into the lower half of Stubbs Stewart State Park. The bright green there is Stubbs Stewart State Park. And right now, there's no way to access the lower end of Stubbs Stewart. There's a trail within there. Chair Harrington, you might be familiar with, it's a little one, the bumping knots trail. So this provides a new access to the bumping knots trail. We've removed the ties and, and what we're proposing is that there be a gravel path, not an asphalt path to begin with. Later down the road, there might be money for the maintenance of an asphalt path. But right now, it's less expensive to build and less expensive to maintain. This map also sort of shows you, the purple line is the continuation of the Salmonberry Trail and how it goes over the Highway forty-seven and then goes over Highway twenty-six and into the timber area. Our volunteers do a lot of work investigating the trail. They map the trail. They map the flora and fauna on the trail. And also opportunities to build shorter segments with less funding that has a good user experience and a good accessibility for users. This next map is of the learning mile, so the last mile on that three point two miles of the catalyst loop. And there's a student here who is out on a rainy day gathering, happily gathering invasive species. This map sort of. This map sort of shows you, there's a new trail ahead there at Manning, and then you go to the Williams Creek Trailhead. That's the beginning of the learning mile. There will be a new trailhead there with bathrooms, parking and trash that OPRD will help manage. And then a mile that goes through farmland and then past the farmland, it goes into this beautiful deep forest, which Mike Cafareta could answer questions about the forest, to the Williams Creek Trestle where it bumps to the learning mile. The blue dots there are the trestles that will have to deck and rail, make safe that go over the, the streams throughout that area. And this is an area where the educators that are working with Salmon Berry Trail are very excited about this as an opportunity to have an outdoor living classroom for students and, and others to come and learn about the trail. Our partners, I just briefly, I'm checking my time, want to highlight two of our recent partners that we have developed relationships with over the last year and a half. One of which is the Banks Elementary School Food Program, which we didn't know about. But when Hampton Lumber closed at the end of the pandemic, we see ourselves at the Salmon Berry Trail Foundation, not just a trail developer, but we're a neighbor to every community, business, government entity along that trail. So we called the city and our local volunteers when that mill closed because we knew it was the largest private employer in the community of Banks. And we learned that the school and the food insufficiency of that school was quite high, and they were having trouble filling the backpacks for the weekend. So that's a program that our board and volunteers now support. We also started a relationship with the Northwest Regional Education Service District to try to develop a Salmon Berry Trail outdoor education program for the future and have established relationships, as Di Ami mentioned, with the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ron and also with the Confederated Tribes of Clatsop Nahalum, who are just at our groundbreaking event in, in Wheeler on Saturday. This is an example of some of the volunteer work being done in the snow on the learning mile, planting trees. And then we did an exploratory trip, really through Washington County and down into the canyon. And this is from one of the higher trestles of the Salmon Berry Trail. Now, this quote I love to share because Suzanne Bonamici, Congresswoman Bonamici, is very supportive of the trail. Part of our advocacy is also working with our federal delegation on federal grants as well as congressionally directed appropriations for the trail. She has submitted a million dollars in this budget, as has Senator Wyden and Senator Merkley. We'll, we'll, we'll continue to work with them to do that, and we're hoping to bring them out to the trail and maybe you all, again, on a, on another trip. I am going to close. I'm not going to go through all of the economic benefits, but you do have all the slides. But I do want to highlight a few because they are important for us all to realize that, you know, trails bring in new revenue for counties and local governments. They also bring new jobs. They spur small business development. We already have at the Salmon Berry Trail individuals who have reached out to us that are buying land near the trail or developing business concepts in anticipation of the trail being built. And communities see a consistent return on investment year after year because trails don't go away. They stay for the long term. Of course, we know it's more, more, it's about more than just the money, as I talked about in the very beginning. And a few examples I want to bring, suggest from other trails is the North Carolina Greenways. Their return on investment for every dollar that they have invested is $1.72 right now every year. The Gap Trail, which is a very popular trail, 150 miles in sort of northern America, they generate $120 million every single year off of the 80 million they spent to build it. The Gap Trail also generates almost $9 million in tax revenue just for local governments. They generate more money for the federal government in tax revenue. And on the BV Trail, this is an old study from 2014, but it showed that they generated $1.4 million in visitor, visitor revenue. And then for Oregon Scenic Bike Ways, which of course, one of the more popular ones here is the Tuolton Valley Scenic Bike Way. A study was done there that showed that bicyclists who took a trail of, or, you know, had an average route of 50 miles spent overnight, $693. And this includes accommodations, of course, food, entertainment and supplies. And then in 2018, Portland State University did a study on the potential of the Salmon Berry Trail. Of course, this is a long, a few years ago, but that study estimated that there would be just under 300,000 users annually on the trail and a health savings of $700 per person, as well as a $20 million return on investment year after year. But of course, more than anything, the trail is, do I have another photo? Yep. The trail is really about the people that you see here that are excited to be part of something that is a legacy that will be, as Di Ami said, a multi-generational trail, as you all know. And thank you so much for having me. Happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Well, just, I'll just start off. I don't have any more questions, but I do want to compliment you in being a marvelous champion. And that's not just to you as the executive director of the Salmon Berry Trail Foundation, but all the dedicated members that have been serving not just as champions, but really catalysts. Someday, it will be built end-to-end, and the only way we're going to reach that someday is if we keep at it. So it's great to finally have the bandwidth in our work session agenda to get this fuller information. It was a little challenging to be able to have, you know, eyes wide open when Commissioner Willie brought his budget amendment without having that. But we're able to, to get where the desired result was. So thank you very much for trying to talk us through that. And I would just say, let's all keep trying to practice the art of the possible. I think the, the work, I was going to say the foundational work, but I don't want to confuse roles. The work that's going into the new MOU for the Rail Council is important, and I think we'll get that done. I'm very appreciative of the work of the funding for this year and continuing to explore in future years. I think that will be an important conversation to have each and every fiscal year, just to keep progress going. These, these visionary end-to-end trail projects do offer tremendous promise. As you've touched on, there are examples all throughout the country. And so it really is a breath of fresh air to remember that vision and keep working towards it as best as we can. Other commissioners, I just, that was my whole load.
Well, first of all, I, I agree with everything that you've just said. And I know that you're fully aware of what our budget constraints are and how we're moving forward, but I think that there is, there is enthusiasm on this commission for this type of work and in connection with all the other partners on this, on this long trail. But I also want to take just a minute and thank Commissioner Willie for his work with you guys. And, and this has been going on for a long time. So I know that you were down in Wheeler over the weekend. I know that you have had focus on this and have kept all of us in the loop as we move forward. And I also appreciate the fact that you are willing to think about what are, what is our bandwidth in relationship to moving this forward and where we can help and where we have to say, okay, this is all we can do. We need to look to our, to our partners as well. And thank you to the staff.
I'll jump in so you can have the last words, Commissioner Willie. Thank you for your presentation. I really learned a lot and just really appreciate the, the energy of how you presented your information. I'm wondering if we could just have a bit of a conversation about some of the partners that you listed. I don't see the community-based organizations in Washington County. And I think there's a effort out there. I know when I toured or did the tour back in 2020, there was an effort about how do we get communities that don't necessarily utilize these trails out there? And how do we build a strong foundation around partnerships to sort of get the word out? And, and in particular, you know, historically marginalized communities and communities of color. And I was surprised not to see any of them on the list. So let's just have a bit of a conversation and give you the mic to sort of explain that.
Yeah, so also, do you want to start?
I want to add one thing to that. So thank you, Commissioner Phi, and I agree with you. And the Council Creek Trail, I think is a really important, I sort of appreciate the work you're doing there because the users won't identify difference between the Council Creek, Banks, Renonia and Salmon Berry. It's, it's one connection from all of Portland into the forest that lets all those communities have a direct way in. So it's really exciting from that standpoint to make that all possible. But it takes all the links, and so your work on the Council Creek, I think, is, is equally important. I'm not selling our group short. I'm just saying.
No, 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 you're absolutely right. No, and we, we have to do a better job. I'll just be honest about it. And part of it is, of course, capacity. Our, we have just, our board actually last month approved contracting out an outreach person. I'm sure you understand how important it is to have community organizers on the ground who are able to establish the relationships and have, provide the support that's needed to have community-based organizations and their communities come out to the trail. So that is what our hope, our hope to do is in the future. We have done a number of guided hikes where we have had individuals from community-based organizations or from that community come out to the trail, but not as an organized group. And, and honestly, it's been capacity. So our hope is to do more of that in the future, this year, actually.
Oh, good.
Yes.
I really, in, in 2020, I, it was the start of it. And I think there was a concentrated effort to bring leaders of, from historically marginalized communities, communities of color together to sort of show the trail and then spread the word. And I think there was a lot of excitement, community-based organizations, that was like, yeah, we can help address the under-utilizations of this trail. It's, it's, it was an amazing experience for me. And I'll be honest, full transparency, it was my first time being there, and I was just so mesmerized, the beauty and, and the attention that is given. So you have a great thing happening, and you have a lot of community-based organizations that are hungry to help you get the word out and get communities get active because we benefit when we have healthy people in healthy communities.
Absolutely. Thank you, we do. And we will do more of that, and I will come back and report to you all.
Yeah, I'll just, just to kind of close it up, I appreciate the opportunity that, that the board asked to have this presentation, get the information, and offer you to visit the trail, reach out to Caroline and go on a hike. It's only a mile? Well, it's a mile out and a mile back. But anyway, it's only a mile. It's, it's, the learning mile is very educational. It's very good. And then if you really want to test it out, you can go where we went several years ago, crossed a couple of trestles.
That was fun.
Which scared the bejesus out of somebody here. And so.
Way to be settled.
So anyway, lots of opportunity, but yeah, thank you for this time. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Caroline, and everybody else, thanks so much for your work on this.
Yep, keep going. Please keep going. Great. At this juncture, we're going to take our lunch break and convene time certain at 1:00 at executive session. And just to get the formality out of the way, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to ORS 192.660, sub 2, sub F and sub H for the purposes of discussing exempt records and potential litigation.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. So when we reconvene at 1:00, we will be in executive session. We're anticipating being in executive session for an hour. And then after that, we'll exit executive session and pick back up with topic number six. Thank you very much. See ya.